The piano sonata number 15 in C major by Mozart. The pianist was Daniel Baronboy.
We'll be struggling when he gets back.
Are your Fiat?
Yeah, my mayoral Fiat. Look, I've delayed a meeting. Look at that.
Is this a new agenda or what? Oh, okay. 7.3.
All right. Good, no executive. Yeah, no worries. We'll go ahead and wait. We're gonna do our roll call.
Oh, okay.
Is this new also?
We can't really look at it when we're here already.
Make sure it gets in, pass it back down. Okay, it is just a little after four o'clock. We'll go ahead and call our November 24, 2014 meeting in order with the roll call, please.
Mayor, Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
At this time, all who are available, if you could please join me in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no awards and proclamations today. That'll move us into our citizens forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that is not on today's agenda. If you have anything that you want to bring up, bring before the commissioners' attention, you can do that now. We just ask that you give your name and address for the record. Anyone? Oh, there you go, of course. Please.
Hello, my name is Joanne Morgan. My address is 248 South Third here in Salina. And I'm coming to you today to try to bring the ban that is currently on pit bull dogs here in Salina back to the city's attention to try to see if we can do some, excuse me, something about revising it, lifting it, or some kind of amendment to it. I currently have two dogs that were surrendered over a month ago. And they weren't captured because they were vicious, or they attacked anybody, or any type of situation like that. They did get it out of our yard, and so that's how the shelter ended up getting them. And I do realize now that there is a ban on them, and so I would like to see what I can do and where I can go to try to get this situation maybe changed or altered. There's several people that have signed a petition to help try to present the case or, you know, for the ban or a revision of the current city ordinance.
Okay. I'm not following. I'm not sure what's there. I know we talked a little bit, and I know I talked to you privately a little bit about the two that are currently locked up.
Yeah, I think I can get you up to date pretty quickly with the general approach. And what that is, is as you may recall, for quite a few years now, the city of Salina has banned pit bulls. At the time of the ban, existing pit bulls that were registered within the timeframe and continued to follow the rules were allowed to stay. But since that time, you couldn't have new pit bulls brought into town, pit bulls bred to create more pit bulls, anything like that. So it's in essence, you had a number registered at the time. And theoretically, as those dogs either get older and pass away, or maybe are taken out of the community, then not able to come back, the number declines until theoretically it's zero. That was based on some really pretty traumatic attacks in Salina, and then some research that indicated a state Supreme Court case that, in essence, enabled cities to isolate the pit bull as a breed specific, which that happened to be the breed that the community was having issues with. Anyway, since that time, that's been in place. And what basically happens is, is if a dog attacks another dog, another person, or running at large, any situation in which animal control would see a pit bull that's not registered under the ordinance, previously registered, because you can't register today, that dog would be considered in noncompliance with the code, not allowed. The owner would be in noncompliance. The owner is typically cited, depending on what the situation is. And then it's adjudicated through municipal court. And due to the breed-specific legislation, due to the state Supreme Court case that it was based on, the, I believe, I don't want to speak for Judge Doss, but I believe she has then determined in most cases, I can't speak for all cases, that the dog is vicious. And your ordinance addresses nuisance dogs, dangerous dogs, and vicious dogs. And vicious dogs are typically put down. And I think that's the main concern, is the dog being put down. There have been certain circumstances some years ago, I don't know what they are, in which the dog somehow made it back to an owner and sometimes made it back into the community as well. Because if it goes back to an owner or to someone else, it's not supposed to be in the community. So that may be a factor. I don't know, because I can't deal with, I can't discuss her decisions, and I don't know what her basis is. But I think the concern is that if the dog gets into the hands of animal control for any reason, it's in violation for practically any reason, and the dog will be put down. And I think that's a fairly accurate concern.
Has she determined these dogs to be vicious, you say? Or are you saying if the court should so decide?
She has that discretion, I believe, today. And I'd look at Greg if I misspeak, but I believe she has a discretion, and that has been the basis of determinations she has made.
So, really, that's not, I mean, that's just kind of our conversation here. You're sort of more interested in the process of repealing the ban? And I would guess, short of, I'm not sure how that was passed, but short of whether it needs a supermajority here to change that, if that were to happen at all?
I'm gonna ask Greg if he remembers. It was a legislative action. I don't recall if there was an attempted petition. There may, well, I have to ask. I don't recall.
I don't believe there was. I think it was simply a matter of adoption of an ordinance.
So just a standard? If you, if it were the three five, you could simply remove it? I don't anticipate that happening. But barring that, just so we don't send her down, and I would do this for anybody who has the desire for a petition, what is the process that she would use for a petition? I think it's only fair to at least let you know, so you're not wasting your time. I mean, to go out and simply get a bunch of signatures and say, "Look, we got 1,800 signatures," probably won't do you much good. But from a legal standpoint, I know we've had other issues, LGBT, which was people signed the petition and took it back. What would be her process to legally go about it? Do we generally advise on that, or?
Right. And commissioners, before, Greg will probably be able to give you the best description of that. But it is often that you do receive what I would call an informal petition, or an advocacy petition that doesn't have legal standing. It's just simply is possibly a reflection of what those folks that sign believe on a particular topic, and then you can choose to do what you want with that. That may be what she's discussing, thinking about. But I'll let Greg talk about the legal process.
Sure.
If there is a desire to pursue what's a petition under the initiative and referendum statute, much what, like what precipitated the referendum on fluoridation, is, that's addressed in KSA, this is the state statute number, is 12-3013. That is what creates and sets out the process for that formal petition that first brings the matter before the city commission. And if the city commission does not take that action, then it goes to a referendum at a city election. That statute ties also into the statute generally relating to petitions. And the form of the question posed is something that is reviewed by the county counselor. The reason being, that referendum would lead to an election that would be conducted under the supervision of the county election officer. So that's why the state law calls for the county counselor's review of that question. So that's, that is the process for initiating the formal request for.
So her process could be simply, I mean, it's almost, I'm also asking, just also for my own, her process then would be to contact the county attorney about posing the question? Is that kind of the step in how they do their?
Yes, no, it's, it is not. I can't speak for Mr. Montoya, the county counselor. But generally speaking, that would be a matter that I would either, possibly you might be familiar with those processes, or ideally, legal counsel might be involved in assisting. Generally, that proposed petition language is something that would be prepared and presented to the county counselor. His statutory role is a review process, not a drafting process.
Okay, okay. Does that make sense? It's easy for us to talk in sort of this, we do this somewhat regularly. He does it a lot longer than we do it. But I just, what I wouldn't want you to do, and again, this is not specific to your case, just anyone who has a concern, I wouldn't want you to go down and spend a lot of time on something that isn't gonna reap you any benefit, like just an informal petition. Probably wouldn't work. So I think, what I gather, best advice is come up with a question that's probably helped with legal counsel, and then that would be presented to the county attorney. Simply then, if it's approved, I guess by him, they could come up with a petition. Is that correct? I don't want to make any mistakes, and I'm encouraging this. I'm just, I would do this for anybody who has an interest on something to change ordinance for city government.
Yeah. I just want to be sure, when you said legal counsel, I assume you meant generally any legal counsel?
Generally, yeah, not our legal counsel. But I mean, you have to hire an attorney to help you write this. I don't think it's required. I think it probably would just help.
No, it's, as I say, it's a matter of personal choice as to whether one researches it, does that drafting, or consults with counsel.
I mean, I hope it's not too confusing, but like I said, I just, I just wouldn't want to see anybody spend, even if it was an issue I disagree with or agree with or whatever, I just wouldn't want to see them waste their time on going through a lot of effort to find out, because then we seem like the bad guys. "Well, I got 1,800 signatures." We go, "I'm sorry, it has no legal basis." I just wouldn't want to do that to you.
Right, that's why I'm here, to look for direction.
And that's it. Like I said, I'm not saying any, I don't speak for all of them. I don't anticipate you would probably get much support from us, but you wouldn't know until, I guess, you ask. But I think you're probably gonna have to go the petition way, would be my guess, because I don't think there's generally been too many commissioners that stood up here and said, "We gotta repeal this thing," in recent knowledge. But it's worth asking. And I just didn't want, like I said, I just don't want you wasting too much time on something that would be insignificant. So I hope that helps.
It does, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they want to bring before us today? Okay, if not, we'll dive into the ever-exciting city commission meeting. Hold on to your seats. This moves us on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, protest petition on application number SP 14-3 requesting approval of a special permit to allow the placement of a wireless communication facility in the public right-of-way for South Marymount Road.
Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Banks to introduce Aaron Martin, who has been the lead guide for planning staff and the planning commission in terms of all things related to the DAS ordinance. So I'll let Greg introduce that, and then we'll have Mr. Martin kind of lay out your review responsibilities this afternoon.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mayor and Commissioners, most of you are familiar with Aaron Martin, one of my partners at our firm. And Mr. Martin did, was in the lead role in the development and working on the development of this policy as it is the first circumstance under which the city is applying its zoning authority in the right-of-way. That was not required, and in fact, it is rather unique among cities that are addressing this matter of the DAS systems or the distributive antenna system. It does provide a layer, if you will, of regulation of the right-of-way in a way that, given your policy direction, has been implemented by local ordinance. In other words, frankly, were it not for this process, those installations would be simply made in the right-of-way wherever the franchisee chose to place them. You all, and I think in your foresight, directed us to develop the policy that is at issue today, and that is the process of looking at it as a zoning matter, these locations. The other aspect is, we are in the context of a matter that is largely regulated at the federal level. We're in telecommunications subject matter, and of course, as you know, that is directed principally at the federal level. And there are standards and tests that apply, that Mr. Martin will elaborate on, that are different than what we are accustomed to when dealing with a more traditional zoning matter. So those are the two points I wanted to preface it with. And with that, I'll step aside and let Mr. Martin assist with the conversation.
As Greg mentioned, this subject of distributed antenna systems is a wireless facility for purposes of federal law. And that means that the placement of those facilities are regulated by federal law. And Mr. Andrews' staff report does a good job of highlighting the different ways that federal regulation touches on the proceedings here today. But I did want to touch on a few of those points at the outset to make sure everyone's aware of those as we get started. One of the more important requirements of federal law is that if the city commission denies the requested permit, that decision must be in writing and supported by substantial evidence contained in the record of today's proceedings. Substantial evidence is defined to mean evidence that a reasonable person would find adequate to support the decision in light of local zoning law. And here, the applicable zoning law is found in Salina Code, Section 42-70, subsection E2. And that sets forth nine different factors that we'll use to determine whether a permit should be approved or denied. And again, Mr. Andrews' permit, his staff report touches on each of those nine factors, and we'll get into those. Not all of them will be applicable to this particular permit you're considering today, but several may be applicable. And those range from consideration of the color and finish of the facility to the size of the facilities in relation to other surrounding land uses. Ultimately, your decision to approve or deny the requested permit must be based on your consideration of all applicable factors within those nine factors. And for each of those factors that you rely on to reach your conclusion, there must be substantial evidence contained in the record as presented to you. So from a practical standpoint, this means that any facts that you wish to rely on to support an approval or a denial, those should be fully presented by the parties at the proceeding today. And it's important to ask questions and flesh out any issues that you may wish to rely on when you ultimately look back to those nine factors and decide whether that permit should be approved or denied. And as I mentioned earlier, ultimately, the decision must be in writing. That may be a little bit difficult to do on the spot, so after the evidence is presented and you have the discussion and announce your decision, we can separately prepare a written finding to be subsequently approved at a public meeting. And then finally, I wanted to touch on the second federal requirement, which is that any decision to deny a permit may not be based on perceived environmental effects of radio frequency emissions from these facilities. The only thing that a municipality may require is compliance with FCC emission standards. There are a few other federal requirements which are touched on in Mr. Andrews' report. I don't think they'll likely become an issue, but I will be sure to alert you if those become relevant. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the substantial evidence requirement or the radio frequency requirement, or anything else that you may wish to know before Mr. Andrews begins.
Any questions for staff?
One question. On the second one, compatibility with abutting property and surrounding land uses, can that be extended to say that in a very densely residential area, this would not be typically considered a structure found there?
Yes, that would be, that would be the surrounding land use in this context, residential.
That would be considered a significant finding? Or I forget the exact term you used as far as the weight of the evidence.
A finding of fact.
Oh, okay. So the second factor you're referring to is compatibility with abutting property and surrounding land uses.
Correct.
So if that factor is used as a basis to deny the requested permit, to comply with the substantial evidence standard, there would need to be some sort of evidence presented that leads a reasonable person to believe that the proposed facility is not compatible with the abutting property and surrounding land use, which in this context, I believe, is residential use. Now, what specific facts may lead a person to think that it's not compatible, we have a great deal of discretion there. But ultimately, that finding would need to relate to some evidence presented during the meeting, whether it's the color of the facility, the aesthetics, or any other factor. We would need to rely on some specific evidence presented during the hearing that suggests or leads you to believe the facility is not compatible with surrounding land use.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I don't know if it relates to you or the petitioner. And there was, from the planning commission meetings, there was an allusion to other small cell towers in the area. Is there another provider for the towers that this would conflict with this tower?
I will let the applicant speak to that, but not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Are we gonna have a report by Mr. Andrews, and then a chance to hear from the applicant, and then any other public comment? And then perhaps have a chance to ask questions at that point?
Commissioners, certainly you can have whatever piece of information, whatever order that you'd like. Certainly, I think, yeah.
Okay, you want a report from, okay, sounds good. All right, Dean.
My job is to fill your heads with evidence, so that you have lots of evidence from which to make a decision. And the reason we are here today is that this is a hearing on a protest petition that was filed by surrounding property owners on application special permit 14-3. And that is a request for a new support pole and antenna in the public right-of-way on South Marymount Road. And the location abuts the west side of Track 1, Block 1 of the East Ridge Acres Plan Development District, which is addressed as 887 East Ridge Drive. So this, these two lots combined here, there's a house here, and there is a vacant lot here, but that combined address for those two parcels is 887 East Ridge Drive. And the proposed location of the pole is in the right-of-way adjacent to that property. The two things that distinguish this from previous technology such as a traditional cellular tower that you would see is that, first of all, this is in the right-of-way and not on private property. Second of all, distributive antenna systems is a network that's denser, so the antenna sites are closer together, and the heights are lower, 35 to 50 feet is considered adequate. Back in the summer, if you recall, there was much discussion of DAS. And the planning commission, consistent with your direction, voted to authorize a zoning text amendment that would apply zoning rules to placement of DAS facilities in the public right-of-way. And city staff worked with Mr. Martin to draft a new zoning ordinance section that he referred to, Section 42-70. And that text amendment set up a two-tiered permitting approach. So if an antenna was gonna be placed by a DAS provider, and it met all the locational and performance criteria in the ordinance, an administrative permit for the installation would simply be approved over the counter as an administrative permit. And those zoning permits are reviewed and approved by myself as zoning administrator. If the proposed antenna placement does not qualify for an administrative permit, then the installation would have to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission following notice to surrounding property owners in a public hearing. And that is the domain we're in right now. We're considering an application that did not qualify for an administrative permit. It was set for a public hearing before the planning commission. Notice was provided to surrounding property owners. A public hearing was held by the planning commission, and the neighboring property owners have protested the application. So back in July, the planning commission recommended approval of the draft ordinance. They provided their findings and supported the need for those types of regulations on page three and four of your report there. In July, you approved that ordinance change on second reading, and that added a new section to the code, 42-70, that we're discussing today. There were a couple clarifications that were made, and those were approved by you in September of 2014. Back in August, you also approved a franchise agreement with Ideatech. And that franchise agreement gives Ideatech, who is the applicant here, certain rights to utilize the right-of-way for telecommunication purposes. However, that is subject to the city's approval of the locations and of facilities under the ordinance. So to give you some perspective, since early part of September, city staff has reviewed 30 locations submitted by Ideatech for plans to place small cell DAS antenna. City staff has approved 24 of those locations administratively, and they were approved administratively because they involve either co-location or replacement of an existing Westar power pole with a newer, stronger pole in the exact same place with an antenna on top. Or there were about four or five locations where new poles were placed, but they were in commercial or industrial areas. So that left five locations where new wooden support poles in residentially zoned areas were proposed. Those five applications were heard by the planning commission on the 21st of October. They recommended approval of four of those. And one application that was located at East Country Club Park, they recommended denial of. In this case, Ideatech has determined there's a need for a wireless communication facility in this location. They've also determined there's no nearby Westar pole that they can either co-locate on or replace. So John, if you could keep going and maybe go to the portion of the application where they did their analysis of alternatives, which this is contained in your packet, and it's, you may have to blow it up a little, John, but this is a indication of, the first thing they have to do is look for existing poles that they could utilize to co-locate or to place their antennas on without having to erect a new pole. And they found that the two closest utility poles, as they labeled A and B here, were not suitable locations, and they have provided their reasons for that in writing. So as a result, they proposed the submittal. If you could go to the photograph, John, of the proposed installation. This is the proposed installation. It is a new pole. The initial installation proposed was a 34-foot-tall wooden utility pole, a three-foot antenna mounted on top of the pole that would be screened by a canister, and then a two-foot-by-six-foot utility box attached to the base of the pole. So that is the application that the planning commission reviewed. Staff took that application and did its analysis, which starts for you on page six, and deals with conformity with the city's comprehensive plan. The city's comprehensive plan just provides for general guidance, but doesn't provide any specific addressing of location or placement of DAS or cellular. or cellular service in general. I can tell you that this, on the future land use map, consistent with the ownership and usage in the area, the future land use designation for this area is suburban residential. As far as the compatibility with the abutting property and surrounding land uses, this factor deals whether the location and the type of facility would be compatible with the surrounding area. And so to the north, you have single-family zoning and single-family dwellings. To the east, single-family zoning, single-family dwellings. And both to the south and west, you have single-family zoning and single-family dwellings. And so, under this factor, you need to look at the location, the proposed height, the design and aesthetic appearance of the proposed facility. And by facility, we're referring to both the pole itself and the equipment cabinet that goes with it, as well as the antenna. There are no public uses or open spaces in the area. This is an exclusively residential area. And it is a fairly visible area because it's right out at the entrance to a subdivision. But the staff did not look at this lot here as open space because it is platted as a building lot and may in fact have a dwelling on it someday. It is a legal residential building lot. The next factor is adverse impacts such as visual, environmental, or safety impacts. We thought we corrected, but mistakenly, again, in our report, described this as being between a street curb and sidewalk. That is not correct. John, if you can go back to the illustration again. This is the east side of Marymount Road. You have the curb line, a public sidewalk. And then a proposed pole location is actually between the sidewalk and the east property line. It is in a visible location. It's not necessarily going to blend in with its surroundings. There have been concerns expressed, both about the pole itself and the equipment box. There was some initial concern that the pole location and the box would interfere with the public's use of the sidewalk. There is a substantial distance there between the sidewalk and the pole itself. And the cabinet is proposed on the opposite side of the pole. So that would be a judgment for you. As far as the color and finish of the proposed pole or tower, this is a standard wood utility pole in the picture. The planning commission chose to approve it, but required that it be a composite pole and not made of wood. And that is certainly something that is a discretionary item in terms of attractiveness or blending in. As far as screening potential, there's really no opportunity to screen this facility from public view or from Marymount Road. One option, of course, would be to take the equipment box off of the pole, put it as a ground-mounted box, and then have some sort of screening or plantings around that box. Again, we point out there are just limited options for screening the facility itself. But depending on what type of equipment cabinet you ended up with, there might be opportunities for screening the cabinet itself. Factor seven is the scale of the facility in relation to surrounding land uses. There are some mature trees to the north of this property, but there are no tall structures in the vicinity. The proposed 34-foot tall pole could be out of place or out of scale with the surrounding residential land uses. This, again, there are no tall structures in the vicinity. This is not located in any entryway or gateway into the city. There are no historically or architecturally significant structures in the vicinity of the pole location. So your role today is to look at the proposal in light of the factors that I just went through to determine whether the proposed placement of the pole, made of wood, 34 feet in height, between Marymount Road and a vacant lot, or some alternative proposal would be compatible with the setting and surrounding land uses. So I noted the planning commission conducted a hearing on this on the 21st of October. They voted six to two to approve this location, subject to the condition that the pole be constructed of composite materials. They did not address the equipment cabinet. They made four findings, which are summarized in the report and also contained in the resolution that they adopted. They found that it would not be visually obtrusive or incompatible with its surroundings. They didn't see any significant visual or environmental or safety impacts. They thought that if it was constructed of composite materials, the color and finish would be less visually obtrusive than a wooden pole. They felt that buildings, trees, and utility poles of comparable height were in the vicinity and they didn't think it would be out of place or out of scale compared to other utility poles and structures in the area. Following the planning commission hearing, there was a protest petition that was circulated and signed. It contained owners in the vicinity, the 200-foot notification area. Staff found that three of the five signatures on the protest petition, all of whom were record property owners in the 200-foot area, were valid, that they comprised 26% of the eligible protest area. And the effect of that is to require that this application receive a supermajority or four affirmative votes in order to be approved. Mr. Martin has added some information there to the report, just further explaining that the city is limited from taking any actions that would have the effect of prohibiting the provision of wireless communication facilities in certain areas of the community. So we have outlined a number of options for you today and I'll walk through them one by one. If you are in concurrence with the findings made by the planning commission or could make similar findings, especially as to a wooden support pole, then one option you would have would be to approve Ideatech's application, which was, their actual application was for a wooden support pole and a pole-mounted antenna and a two-by-six equipment cabinet. That would require four of the five sitting commissioners to agree to that action. You could concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve installation of a composite support pole, as they did, because of the protest petition that would require four affirmative votes. You could request that the applicant modify their proposal. You could look at further revisions to the pole itself as to changes to its color or material. You could provide for a different style of equipment cabinet. So your options are this two-by-six-foot cabinet mounted at the base. Ideatech also has what they call a high-on-the-pole box, which is smaller in diameter and it's mounted about eight feet off the ground in that location. And some locations, they have established a ground-mounted equipment cabinet away from the base of the pole. And so that is a third option in terms of the equipment cabinet. You would have the option to return this application to the planning commission to provide enhanced findings if you think they missed or misinterpreted something. Or you could make a motion to deny the applicant's request to locate a wireless communication facility in this location. That would require three affirmative votes. Two things we wanted to make clear is if you believe there are alternative locations in this vicinity that would be preferable or less visually intrusive, the correct course of action would be to deny this application and then Ideatech would fall to them to file a new application for a different location in the vicinity. We can't adjust the location of this pole during this particular meeting. The other thing I wanted to point out was only the protest petition or the petition that is in your packet is a statutory protest petition in terms of affecting the votes. The other petitions and letters and things that we have handed out up there are just a sense of the neighborhood's opinion, but they don't affect your need to provide votes. And then the third thing, the planning commission took advantage because this is a quasi-judicial action that, just as you did with reviewing the heritage commission's action, you do have the ability to go into closed session with Mr. Martin to deliberate on this matter if you so choose. So with that, I would be open to any questions that you might have about the information presented in the staff report and the various attachments.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have one question. So in this particular case, the property line does not extend to the sidewalk?
No, as, John, if you can go back to the photo. Essentially, the property line is back at this fence line. That is the east right-of-way line for Magnolia Road. And then the sidewalk is located within the right-of-way.
Is that, so is that consistent then farther north on Marymount as well?
I can't speak to the right-of-way width for the full length of Marymount, but the location of the sidewalk is pretty consistent there. And the thing about Marymount Road is most of our standard residential streets are 33 feet wide. And Marymount Road is 29 feet wide and has no parking. So it is, it is actually, as far as road bed, it's actually slightly narrower than most of our residential streets. So there's actually a little wider area back of curb.
Go ahead.
Got a number of questions here. First, I'll start from the back and work towards the front. And that is, is that after the alternative you had mentioned, that if there's a belief that there is an alternative location in the vicinity, then the option would be number five to deny?
The option would be, if this is not an appropriate location, even if there is, might be a suitable alternative nearby, this is not the place to determine that. The appropriate thing to do would be to turn this down and have them submit for a different location.
Without knowing what an appropriate distance is for, you know, I assume that you're dealing with overlaps and coverage and trying to figure out those things. Without knowing the specific site locations and what the criteria that goes into each one of these, it's hard to determine, you know, I'd be looking at the other things I have. Or how tall is the pole? How tall are the Westar poles? How tall is the tree canopy? Just all to figure out. And because it looks like a tree canopy is somewhat near to the north and it looked like there's a little bit to the south. But how would you define a relatively near vicinity? I mean, would you be talking?
That's what you would rely on Mr. Myers from Ideatech to tell you. Because he's done that analysis.
Okay. And then just one other question on the protest petition. And that is, is that on the number of people, the 26%, were any of those individuals present at the planning commission decision when that was? And so do we know which one of these factors, whether it's the cabinet, the height, the pole material? Do we have any general idea of what the main concern is for the protest? Or is it just the whole thing in general?
I have talked to some who, a few who don't object to the pole, but object to the equipment cabinet. And I have spoken to many who object to the entire facility being there at all. And so as far as the signatories on the protest petition that were valid signatures, Mr. Kasem signed the protest petition. He was not at the planning commission meeting. Mr. Montoya and his wife signed the protest petition. They did not attend, but they sent a letter to the planning commission that you have in your packet. And then the Owings were not at, or did not speak at the planning commission meeting. They were also signatories to the petition.
And how would you characterize generally, there were five of these, is it fair to say they were, five of them in residential settings?
They were all in residential zoned areas, but they were not equal in terms of being in a residential setting. One is on the east edge of the Gypson Hill Cemetery on Marymount Road, farther north. One of them was at the edge of East Country Club Park. One of them was on YMCA Drive by the line of YMCA. That is zoned residential, but it's not a residential setting. The other one was near the reserves at Prairie Glen Apartments, which is zoned residential, but again, is not as much of a residential setting as this.
But across the street from Jerry Ivy Park?
Correct.
Okay. And how would you, why, if four were approved, this one included, and the one near the Country Club Park was not approved? What is, is there substantial differences? Are there underground utilities up there or no other poles that, I mean?
That would have been the basis for the planning commission's decision was both of those factors. The underground utilities, the lack of any overhead wires, and the fact that they have low-profile composite streetlight poles. They don't have standard wood streetlight poles in the Country Club area. So putting up a taller pole made of wood, even composite pole, they didn't think was compatible in that location.
Okay, so there were substantial compatibility issues that were present there then?
That is how they distinguished it.
Is there a significant difference between that scenario and the one at East Ridge?
Well, as you get into East Ridge, they do have underground utilities there. There are some overhead lines and poles present on Marymount. What is not present is unlike over by the YMCA, where there is an extensive tree canopy or even along Marymount Road by Gypson Hill Cemetery. The real question was how isolated this location is and how much it would stick out from what you have here as an already existing pole. And Mr. Myers will explain further as to why this pole couldn't just be used to place an antenna on. And so lacking the ability to place it here, they chose to submit an application to put up an independent pole to support the antenna.
Any other questions for staff?
Certainly be available if something comes up.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come aboard? Sure.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor, William Myers from Ideatech. Wanted to go ahead and give you some more information, answer some of your questions. I know there was a number of good ones that came out of that and make sure I cover the information that you're looking for so you can make a valid decision on what's happening. One of the questions that you did ask was probably about availability of the existing utility poles in that area and why they could not be used as co-location facilities. For pole A, which is the one farther to the north, an application to Westar was put in for that location. In the application itself, there is verbiage for denial, but I'll briefly read through what they state as the reason for the denial. And they also fall under federal legal liability about how they have to also provide good reasoning on why certain telecoms cannot attach to their facilities. And this is the statement that they made. Under neutral high construction, the neutral wire- Under neutral high construction, the neutral wire is supported by a pole mount top pin. Neutral high construction, as the name implies, requires that the neutral line be in the highest position of the equipment is an essential component of the electrical system. If you look at the top, what they're talking about is the very highest line there is an electrical neutral line that they're discussing in this. Though it is possible, though it is possible to reconfigure the neutral high construction into neutral low construction, either horizontal or vertical with a different lighting arrester, the grounding system, this would involve reconstruction in multiple poles, perhaps even the entire pole line. And that pole line stretches from the very north of Marymont down. Perhaps if not simply a matter of, it is not simply a matter of replacing and constructing one pole or even just a couple of poles. So that was their valid information on why for pole A, and if you look at pole A in the picture at the left, it kind of, it's hard to see on the background. The second pole, pole B, has the same type of construction. And if we were to submit, the reason we did not submit an application for that location is because it has the exact same type of structure. So I didn't, we didn't want to spend the time it was to facilitate that to give back the same answer. Additionally, there is already a riser, which is a conduit down on the side of it, plus a light pole, which adds to the amount, the conditions that they will allow. They want essentially absolutely complete and clean poles. Within our Westar, we've probably submitted over 30 primary poles to Westar for co-location. Out of those 30, we have been able to get approval for one throughout Wichita, throughout Salina, and throughout Hutch to kind of give you an idea of how restrictive they are for telecommunications to move through that secondary prime, primary, or that, through the primary area up to the top of the pole where we have to put the facilities. So that may address some of the reasons why we had to move to a new pole location or put in a proposal for a new pole for this. There were some other questions that I would like to maybe just comment on as far as that were addressed. One of them was a specific difference between the pole location that was denied and this pole location. A component of that, I think, is looking at the surrounding structures. If you look in this picture from this very angle, you see that there are already Westar facilities. The height of those Westar facilities, and I don't have it written down, and I should have, are, I believe, between 40 and 45 feet tall. The scope of this makes it look like our pole is actually taller than that, and in essence, it is not. It would be of comparable size to that pole that's already located in that location. I think that's one of the major reasons that the planning commission did go ahead and approve this as a location is about looking at the surrounding structures as it is wood and as the height is, is in consideration, the height of the proposed pole very on par. I think one of their concerns that, from our perspective, that they were talking about was the wood pole being not in structure or not being, trying to make it not as what they would deem as not fitting in with the environment as much, and that's why they went to the composite. And we would, we would like to say that, you know, if a concern is that the cabinet on the outside of the pole is one of the biggest leading causes for, for the protests, we're happy to facilitate a ground mounted facility that's next to it. It can be anywhere from, I think the closest is like six feet, and the farthest away is about 25 feet from that location, still being in the light ray, and then putting, you know, shrubs around that. We have, in places in other communities where we have done that before, the request, when we worked with the city to be able to facilitate that, we said we would be happy to provide that screening for this type of location because of the acuteness of, of the location and its sensitivity. But that, we worked it out that the landowner was the one that would provide the maintenance for that moving forward, so that we would be happy to be able to put it out there. But then they would be able to maintain that moving, as a, as a direction, something to consider as part of your conversation. I think the other component that we would, we would like to bring to the council is the conversation about how this is perceived by a regular person and what the reactions were to that. And our, our voice to you would be that the planning commission, we view as a regular person, and the vote in that planning commission meeting was a six to two vote as a substantial way to say that, yes, in this case, we've had regular people in the community who have heard the argument from both, both sides and have stated that they believe this is a viable direction to put forward. Is there some other questions that I can answer or some other information I can give?
Just by that last statement, did that infer that there was customer motivation for the new pole?
Yes. Part of, part of the analysis that is done for being able to put one of these location in place is that the national carrier, who the, the primary utilizer is, overlays what their current graph is, but then they look to match that with end customer response to what they have going on. Now, for this specific location, I don't know, or I don't know if there was or was not a call made to say, we don't have the coverage we need. One of the things that we talked about with the planning commission was the result of how this would be utilized and then how those customers may not see the, the issues right now with their current provider. But as they add on more people into the, into the system, and then also further utilization of the current system actually shortens and makes the spectrum of the larger towers draw in because of the utilization of it. And we talked about how, you know, five years ago, it was a one to one device ratio. One person had a smartphone. Now many families have, you know, a husband, a wife, multiple kids, multiple kids have multiple devices, and multiple parents have multiple devices. I know my wife and I both carry multiple devices because of our work compared to our personal phones. And that's some of the usage that they're seeing and why they're pushing for this direction.
Exactly. I was curious as to the, just the original motivation for wanting to locate the new tower. Second question is on that diagram, can the new pole be physically close to the wires that already exist, you know, are you put in a tree shrub or a tree area?
Yeah, there has to be a 10-foot distance at minimum from the electrical power lines to be able to put it in place.
Is there 10 feet in that grove of trees north of there?
In the next row over?
Yeah.
I...
I'm just trying to...
ascertain...
Imagine the scale. I mean, just, it looks like you could fit 10 feet in there.
I couldn't, I couldn't answer that.
Kind of generally in the same vicinity as that question. If, and I don't know if this map is to scale, it says one is 200. It looks like it might be. Would moving at 200 feet change the performance substantially of?
Yes. The, the radius for these devices are about two to three block radius. So 200 feet is on par with a, a large move when you're talking about such a small radius that they're trying to provide that coverage basis for. Usually 100 feet is even a large move.
Okay. Because I just, and I don't know, Dean, if you'll be able to help with this or not, without knowing what the specific grievances that the petitioners have on this, you know, I just look on this map and I just see it's directly across the street from one of the homes, and I don't know if that person perhaps is a, okay, there we go, there's our answer. I mean, so there are certain things that I think when you look spatially at this thing that, that there are probably, I would assume that there are probably a number of concerns that person has and that, and that homeowner has that might be different than someone that is pulling out and sees it casually. So...
One of the things that came out in the planning commission that I may just state with that point is we had an individual that came up and talked about, you know, some alternatives. The alternatives that they proposed were never in their backyard or adjacent to their property as a component of this conversation.
Yeah.
So everybody wants to have the infrastructure, but not the facilities.
But I look at this and just, and I apologize, I'll, you'll be able to get up, but I, you know, I look at this and I look and I see what is, what is the backdrop to that, to that particular circumstance? And there's nothing behind it. Whereas if you move 50 and 75, 100 feet south, there's at least something behind that so that it blends in kind of more to the surrounding instead of just being the thing. So, so it's one of those things where, that's why I asked, is it substantially damaged the performance of that thing because it just, it couldn't be in a worse spot? I mean, just from having, just right out in the open and in the middle of nowhere, so...
Just to follow up on that, if this has only a three-block radius and you don't need it for the current demands, how do you project where you're going to need it five years down the road?
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not needed for the current demands. I think that they're showing that it is needed for the current demands. I just don't know that there has been a customer call to complain about the coverage basis at this point. So the projection is of how they've seen the use, utilization in the last two to three years, and that's the projection of how they move forward to be able to find the infrastructure that's needed to be put in place today.
And where's the next nearest antenna to this one?
It's a good question. Yeah, there is, there's facilities farther up to the north. I would say half mile, that'd be a better estimate of where.
So then typically around town, these would be roughly how far from each other?
It depends on what coverage is already in that area by a larger tower. So you can't, I couldn't necessarily say that you're going to see one of these every so often. It's really acute to the current network profile to try to help specific dark spots or fringe coverage.
Gotcha.
Commissioners?
Yes.
I might suggest that we wait until Mayor Householder is back to proceed, given the, the need to substantiate the ultimate findings based on the evidence that's presented here.
Okay.
Well, we'll hopefully he's fast.
Do, 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 do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's just, it's just floating around.
It's been here about three weeks now.
How long's it been here?
Three weeks.
Really?
Yeah.
Is anybody missing a mouse? Show that down there, it might be dawn, Mayor Mans.
I leave the meeting, they're like taking things apart.
You're a lot more important than you think.
You know, what'll I need?
Well, we just wanted to make sure that you were present since we needed to have a finding of facts.
Oh.
Should it be appropriate here, so.
My fiat's not as strong as I thought. Okay, what'll I miss?
In the planning commission meeting that you mentioned that the coverage radius and span would conflict with other small cell towers that are farther into that area. The carrier would deny a request to locate there. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, there was, this was their request to move it to the cemetery at that point, which I think was 200 or plus feet to the north. At that point, it would be in conflict with another, either it will be in conflict with a larger macro tower or be in conflict with another small cell tower. And that's why the, you couldn't, we couldn't put that in that location and facilitate what needs to be done by the carrier that's requesting the facility.
Are there other small cell towers in the vicinity that don't belong to you?
Not that I know of.
So what you're talking about here, small cell towers, aren't these kinds of small cell towers?
No, those, there are others throughout the Gypson Hill area. I think there is about 10 locations from the neighborhoods stretching from about Marymont and I want to say Country Club Hill back to, or farther east about a mile, and then farther south, about, I want to say, three miles. That area was an area that had a weak fringe coverage in one of the areas. It's, so for the small cells, really two reasons for it. Either one, there's a capacity issue, or there is fringe coverage, things where they have spotty coverage. You may be in your basement and can't have coverage that way. And so these are the areas that they laid over a map and said, these are the areas that we need to get done and taken care of first. This is not an area of high capacity. Those areas are more what you're seeing on Ohio Road. You're going to see those down on Ninth Avenue. This is utilized for that weaker signal area.
This is, I don't know if it's related or not, but technology changes all the time. And in fact, there's technology that is coming into play now that would, instead of rely on cellular capacity to make a telephone call, you'd do it by Wi-Fi. And I was just wondering if, if that could be the, the case here where, you know, this time next year, people would be making their phone calls by Wi-Fi instead of cellular service, thus diminishing the need for this kind of tower.
Yeah, actually, the direction is in the opposite way. The next trend is called voice over, or video over LTE is the next big push, which is where the, you're taking a voice, you're having a call, but it's video conferencing at the same time. That's probably the next biggest push going on in the telecom market. And one of the things that was just done in the last two weeks, I read with the magazine, that AT&amp;T is now linking up with Verizon, which is one of the major carriers and, you know, is a, is a agreement where they're going to be able to use each other's LTE network. And these devices are for that LTE network to be able to facilitate that type of sharing community where a lot of times there's agreement for roaming. Some of the new things that come out is that now the two biggest carriers, which we haven't seen before, Verizon, AT&amp;T said, okay, there's enough LTE coverage for both of ours that we need to get to this cooperative agreement so that we can both do video calling on each other's network. Because if we don't put it together between the both of us, no one's going to be able to use it. Because one network talking across another work is the way to be able to get it out to everybody instead of localized to a single network.
It seems to me, and again, I mean, I know you guys talked about this a little bit, but I'm kind of with John, and I don't remember whose, whose house was across the street you were. You're the one that are directly coming out of East Ridge that's at the angle, or you're the one with the Circle Drive?
The Circle Drive.
Circle Drive. Unfortunately, it seems to me that where you've kind of got that clutter, clutter of trees, that that thing was hidden kind of in the trees across there, at least it's a little less visually distracting from you. I haven't seen the area. I'm with you. What happens is we all want the service, we all want the stuff, but we don't want the pole on our land. I mean, that's just what it boils down to. Barring difference in technology, we're kind of stuck with what we are. And at some point, I think it has to be a compromise, and we have to figure out what's going to go on here. I agree with the Vice Mayor, that where it sits is the worst possible of all. I mean, it's not ideal across from you, but it's still a heck of a lot better than that, which is, I mean, I see, one of the pictures has a for sale sign on there. Good luck with that, if you put that there. Yeah, I don't know who owns it, but yeah, yeah, so it's, they're probably not going to be able to sell it. But I don't know the technology, and I don't know, you know, again, it looks like you, my thought would have been cemetery down further, that would have made the most sense. But I get that the technology doesn't work there. But, you know, somewhere at least in the trees, and I don't know if the trees block coverage, just somewhere down there where, you know, of course, that's the front yard of this guy, so there's, you know, it's just...
Yeah, we looked for multiple locations to try to figure out where to put this at the point.
Yeah.
We kind of viewed this as if you're looking across the street, it kind of is in between... We kind of viewed this as if you're looking across the street, it kind of is in between two property lines. Traditionally, you always try to put utility services in between property lines. This was the farthest away that we could get from a house on the other side of the road and was part of our understanding of why to put it on this quarter. And instead of going to across the street or back to some other locations, because you move it back to the south and then you're across from somebody else's front window.
Yeah, theirs.
Or you move it to the north.
I think though, I mean, and I don't know if it's possible or not, but if you were to move that and probably without the, and I don't have a pointer anyways, but with this, I don't know if you could go to the slide, John, on the, that shows the furthest, yeah, right there. You know, if you came down, of course, the flag for the description there is kind of in the way. But, you know, I'm just looking at even if you were directly across from the property line on the west side of the street, it at least is in the, it doesn't conflict with the main lot because I would see that lot as being accessed off of the other road and not accessing off of, so it'd be in the backyard of the big vacant lot there. And you'd have some background to it. And I don't know how, that looks like on this scale of this map that you're probably looking about maybe 100 feet. Would that be?
The pole is 34 feet high.
Right.
He was talking about distance from the.
Yeah, I'm talking about if you were to move it to. Right. Pick the wrong day not to bring that laser pointer. Yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, right there, yeah, right in that, just in that area. Is that too, is that too, would that be too far to move something like that? Because you're looking at, you'd be in the, I don't know how this thing works.
Just one little.
You get what I'm saying is that you're not dealing, you're in between property lines for those, that side of the street. You've got a bit of background happening for all of it. And you'd actually be in the backyard of any future home that were to go in that, in that area.
Why don't you shoot that pointer over there?
Oh, right, so, right.
I thought you were talking up a little bit.
Between any two of the trees.
That's a little bit of what we come to.
I'm your father, Luke.
But that was where, yeah, that was.
Many times we see every person has a different idea, an idea of where the best places of what they're thinking. It can facilitate it at.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at it from a site-specific perspective.
We're sort of setting a precedent here because we're going to get a lot of these requests. And, I mean, that's, I think that's kind of why we have a planning commission. They ask the questions and they go through all this, and that's what they're for, so.
I'd just like to, go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's fine.
I've noticed the cemetery has been mentioned more than a few occasions. The residents of the cemetery don't have a lobby here this evening, obviously. But, you know, it's not just a place where you dump stuff because you think the people in there won't mind. It's, I think some sanctity needs to be preserved when we just arbitrarily say, let's just put it in the cemetery.
No, I agree, it's a hot property, people are dying to get in there. Anyone? All right, forget it. So maybe if we don't have any more direct questions for the applicant, or you don't have anything more for us, and we may not be done, you may still be coming up here, maybe we'll hear from the homeowners, that seem reasonable? Okay, great, we may call you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, obviously, we've got concerned citizens here, so let's, whoever wants to come before us and speak, go ahead and let us know your thoughts on this and. Again, just for our record, if you give us your name and address, we know where you live, we can see it visually, but it's more so that.
Yeah, she's this one right here, yeah.
Are you the one with the circle, the?
No, I'm just north of there.
Oh, okay, you're this one here.
Okay, great.
I'm in the box there, yeah.
And that's your driveway, is that correct?
Yeah, that's my kitchen window across from the red dot.
Listen, I got a pointer, I'm going to use it.
I'm Jennifer McCall, and I'm at 922 South Marymount, so. My husband and I just moved back to the area this spring, so we purchased this home. And that was one of the major appealing factors of the home was the openness of the area that we were moving into, the quality of homes and just the general aestheticness of the area. We're planning on remodeling our house so we can get it back up to shape to match everybody else's, but. So our number one concern definitely is aesthetics. It doesn't fit with anything in the neighborhood, it's going to be very noticeable. Secondary, I'm a little bit concerned about the safety of the area. There, that is a busy intersection going into the subdivision, there's quite a bit of traffic in and out of there. It's on a hill, so that's something to take into consideration with visibility issues. Also with the sidewalk, I know it's touted as, you know, a wide area. There are a lot of people on bicycles, a lot of people with dogs, a lot of people with kids in strollers. So just a single sidewalk, it isn't enough necessarily. People are always going into the green space to go around each other and get by. So I do have some safety concerns as far as that goes as well. One thing that kind of came up was talking about trying to equate having a tree is equal to having a pole. Not really the same thing, in my opinion. The other area that was denied it by the Country Club, one of the arguments were there were no poles there, so we can't put a pole there. Well, there's not a pole there, so why can't we put a pole there, anyway, sorry. And also just kind of concerned about the, really the need for it. This is pretty much, if it were only satisfying the need in a three to four area, three to four-block area, that's really the only vacant lot. So if we're already meeting demand, as long as those people don't move in and get, you know, 3,000 cell phones right there, is it really necessary to have this in this area? Those are my concerns.
Okay, if, just so we've got you, I mean, obviously, we've talked a little bit about this. Now, we're not saying one way or another, I'm just speculating. If there was an evil that had to be done and we had to put a pole here, because we are required to make efforts, I understand, to satisfy. Obviously, this is nobody's first choice, I don't think. If it were down kind of where the Vice Mayor was saying, I know, I'm trying to, I don't know, your house sits here, right, misses the driveway? I mean, if it were somewhat situated here, and again, we're just speculating because I basically, I think we have the opportunity to deny. We don't have the opportunity to say this is where we're putting your pole. But obviously, we want to give some indication to maybe the applicant if they reapply or whatever the process is, what may be acceptable. Let's say this doesn't work, nobody likes it, we deny it, not saying we are, just if they were to come back here, is this at least more preferable? What I'm trying to do is find the least amount of evil.
Right, because that gets it away from the intersection, and it does put it with some foliage and at least, again, not just out in the wide open where everybody can see.
Okay, again, just trying to find everybody's.
Completely, just opposed to it right there.
I just want to find everybody's pain threshold as we go through this. And just, you know, some people may say, not at all, we don't want it, period, whatever. But, and I'll assume that's your first choice, but if the second choice, this would be preferable to. Okay.
Yes.
All right, any questions at all?
Jennifer, the neighbor that's to your south, do you know, do you know who that person is? Do you know if they were one of the petition signers?
I think everybody knows who that person is.
What's that?
Oh, that's Mr. Montoya.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to put the pole right here.
Yeah.
So what'd you get for not showing up?
He actually mentioned there are some utility poles to the south of his property and thought about maybe that being a better option as well, so he did.
Okay. Oh, hold on, wait, Chad, you have to wait till you're up in front of the mic, because the people at home can't hear, so we have to remember them, okay.
So there may be opportunities on the other side of the street where it's not impeding the sidewalk, it's not in an intersection, and it is more covered with foliage. So not necessarily there, I'm not trying to throw Mike under the bus and say, hey.
Sure, but he's not here, so it's always easier to do, so that's okay too. But, okay, well, let's kind of keep it in mind, we'll, you know, again, Ideatech maybe say, hey, look, we've looked at that, that didn't work. We'll go through everybody, so, okay, Chad, did you want?
Hello, I'm Chad Casson, I live at 948 Barlow. And first of all, y'all had some really good questions for this guy back here. Like, for instance, you know, about, you know, on the Country Club, how there's no wires in the air and it's all underground. That's the way our neighborhood is. You know, there's no wires up on top or, you know, it's, and we like to keep it that way. But, well, I went around, I had everybody in the neighborhood sign. I think we got everybody, but maybe two houses weren't there. And, but before I go to that, I think Mike Montoya is the one that suggested there's, to the, to the south of his house, there's an area that has other boxes and other telephone poles. And it'd be really, you wouldn't even see it there. So to me, to the south of Mike's house, there's an area. And then to the north of the house on the corner, there's an area that would be 100 times better. So I mean, if you see the trees by Mike's house, right around, I think it's right around in there. There's a bunch of other, like, telephone poles and stuff like that. And then, see that house on the corner on the, yeah, behind that house, right, almost in the same line as, there's just right around there in those trees. There's more, there's more, you know, bushes and trees and maybe even another telephone pole right around there. Now, my question is, I don't know how far that is from those other two places, but is that, I mean, to me, that's pretty close. Is that too far to where it'll work?
We can probably ask him when they come back up and.
Yeah, I mean, it's very, very close. The other thing is I get perfect cell, you know, we have no problem. We didn't ask for it, we don't want it, and we don't need it, you know? I don't have a problem. And, you know, we do high-res downloads, we do all kind of things with internet and, you know, all the things that he's talking about. The other lady, Ms. McCall, had a good point. There isn't any more houses moving in here. In fact, there probably might not ever be a house right down the corner. They saying too that they want it to be away from the houses and all that. Yeah, well, there may be a house at some point there. I mean, who would want to look out, you know, no matter which side they point their house to? It's really, I mean, we're not saying not to have it. It's all good, just put it in a more, like, presentable area that isn't, I mean, that thing is just, that's like, it's very sparse and, you know, it's very open right there. I mean, it's like the worst place they could possibly pick. And, you know, that's the other thing, it's very, like, if the placement of the pole is so critical, how come the Country Club was being able to be moved? Who answers that question? Is this guy right here?
Probably. Yeah, maybe, yeah. Well, we'll ask him when he comes back up, yeah.
Okay, good.
Well, when he comes up, yeah.
Yeah, basically, yeah, there's just, I mean, if you just drive, if you just drive up and down right there, just, you know, a couple of blocks, you'll see, like, like I said, those two places are way better than. But again, everybody in the neighborhood that was home, and that was about 95, 96% of the people, signed the thing. Dan Daly and Bonnie Daly wrote a nice letter. And at one time, somebody had suggested to put it in the cemetery. And I think they, they had denied it. That's another company before, and it's in that letter. I mean, basically, their letter is awesome, and I should probably just read their own letter. But I guess, you know, again, we don't have the wires in our neighborhood, and it's just a eyesore, it's just right there. And again, we don't, I don't see we have a problem with our cell service.
All right, thank you, Chad.
How far does East, how far does East Ridge Drive go back? Our map stops.
Stops right there.
Right after Barlow Court.
Yeah, because then they become Barlow.
And so, just real quick, Dean, is the 200-foot radius of noticing residents and property owners of this and therefore, or thereby, sort of counting as that 26% of the property owners, is that? Would, could most of those be characterized as Barlow Court and Barlow Drive residents? Because it looks like, at least the petition that may or may not be official, that looks like a.
It's like three houses.
Large, yeah. Well, I mean, it's both sides of the street, too.
This has got Ridge View address, but it's on Marymount Road.
Okay.
This is the Montoya residence, it's on Marymount Road. This is a property that's owned by Mr. Casson right here at 955 South Marymount. Those are the ones that signed.
It's my wife, it's his house, but I'm helping with it.
So those were the people who signed the protest petition, who owned property within the 200-foot notification range. The other people were notified by word of mouth and other means.
Dean, could you go ahead and address the question at the mic, just to make sure everyone can hear it properly?
The people that signed the protest petition that are in your packet are here, formerly 910 South Marymount. Now, they've reoriented the house so it faces Ridge View, but it's that property, the Montoya property there and the Casson property there. Those were the ones who signed the protest petition that comprised the 26% of the notice area.
Okay.
This, you've got a letter from these folks, but they've already moved to Ohio, so they're not available to sign a petition. And then other cases, they were joint tenancy, and you have to have both spouses sign in order to count as a protest.
Okay, okay.
And then just, if, Mr. Casson, I just had a quick question for you on this, and it relates to the question that the mayor asked Ms. McCall. And you alluded to it a little bit, but would it be accurate to say that if you were to maybe move it a little bit south or even, as you said, across the street even? That would be much, you wouldn't have a problem with that?
Yeah, no, I don't think anybody would, you know. Like I said, right to the south of Montoya's house, if you just drive down there, there's a cluster of some other little things like this, you know, boxes and poles. And it's in the wooded area. And then behind that, north of that house, there's another little area that it would be hidden. It would, you wouldn't hardly see it. And I don't think, I mean, I'm speaking for every, I don't think my other neighbors would have a problem with that either. I think we'd all be, we wouldn't be here. If they'd only moved it to those two places, we wouldn't be in this meeting right now.
So is it, and maybe other property owners will speak to it too, so I don't want to, but it seems to me that what you're saying is that it's more of a seeing it when you're driving in and out of the.
Yeah, it's just in the, like y'all said it yourself, even Aaron said that, you know, it's, it's the worst place they could pick as far as being, you know, seeing with your, with your eyes. But the guy that owns that land, like you said, lives in Ohio or something, he barely even knew about it. And the other person, somebody just bought the house that goes with it, and that person hasn't, you know, we told the Realtor about it, but they don't even really know about it. I mean, they just bought a house without knowing about this ornament or whatever, you know, this thing they want to put there. And the other person lives in Ohio, you know, so I mean, I'm sure those two people would be here if they could be or they knew all about it. So, I mean, I don't think it's, really, to me, the solution's simple and easy. It shouldn't be that big of a deal, just move it a little bit, that's all we're asking.
Okay, thanks. And you had something, sure.
Don Caden, 870 East Ridge Drive in Salina here. Originally came just to object to it, because it's an ornament that's very ugly in front of our property.
Which one, you're right here?
Go up around the bend a little bit there, just keep going, third house.
Oh, okay, somewhere in there, okay, nowhere, it's right in here, okay, sure.
But I would like to commend a couple of people. Kay, you're absolutely right. This is going to be a problem not only today, but you're going to face this every time they want to go 300 feet south. And that was your question, Commissioner Blanchard, how far is that range? If it's only 300 feet, you're going to be fighting this every week as this comes up. So I don't envy that position, and I agree with you, Commissioner Davis, it doesn't belong in a cemetery. It doesn't. So where does that leave us? Your problem, okay? You're elected for that. But that was my point, I think, we've got to come up with a solution. And my first thought when I came here was. And my first thought when I came here was, Markley Road, why not put a bigger tower at Markley and cover the whole radius there? I mean, to me, it's that simple. I, I don't understand these small concepts going every 300 feet down our roads. So, I was going to say a lot more, but they've already said it. But I, I did want to commend you for, for your actions today. And I don't, I, I think there are other options besides that. Now, which location would I prefer better? You can put it in Mr. Montoya's backyard, it wouldn't bother me a bit. He may have something to say about that, so I'm not going to say anything.
See, he didn't show up, see, that's the downside, I appreciate it. Thank you for also recognizing, not repeating, we, we always like that when these meetings can get a little long. We have some people who like to say exactly what the person, and for them, said, I think to the fluoride issues, but. Speaking of fluoride!
That's all right, Congressman.
Absolutely.
My name is John Adams, I live at 911 Barlow Drive. It's just past the little Y on the right. And actually, I own 126 of that driveway that comes off Marymount Road. That road is privately owned, so that all of the people that live in the entire area of our homeowners have a 126 share of that street.
Oh.
So this is actually part of our front yard. And as you talk about things that are of convenience, everybody likes a bathroom and a facility that's close by, but you don't put it on your front porch.
Right.
You hide it in the backyard. And you're more than welcome to explore my backyard. There's a line of trees, and there's also a very wide 20-foot area that goes completely toward the golf course that is considered a right-of-way. And there are only about a block and a half or two more that's not visual on the map to the left before you get to the river. All those lots are sold to my knowledge and are built on. Those houses are fairly widespread, so the density isn't going to be increasing. Cox certainly has a good cable system in there. People that are going in my neighborhood have talked more about using Cox for their Wi-Fi's and their things, not so much going. But we are also on a non-major artery. And if this is considered a mobile phone, having a tower right in the middle of a very untrafficked street doesn't make nearly as much sense as moving it down to Crawford, where there's a huge much increased volume. Also, Markley Road has also got a much higher traffic volume. So the only people that are really going to be utilizing this tower are people going to and from work from this housing area, which are already adequately served, or they're going to be watching videos on their home screens, which they have other alternatives besides their cellphone. So moving into my backyard and moving it to any of the other locations that have been mentioned would be my preference as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Sure.
I'm Alfredo Lopez, I live in I-30 Barlow, a little farther there. But actually, I don't have a choice to go to my house. That is the only entrance and exit from my house. What I've seen, I've seen the lady mentioned too, the sidewalk is very narrow. This is the only exit that we have if we want to walk outside our house. It's the only exit that we can use. And it's very narrow, I think she's right. And it's, and it's bicycles, and even when a lot of people come, we have to go to the grass, because it's very narrow. So I, and it's a lot of people that use it, I use it myself. So that is a, and also, I think in the dimension, then, they want to use the electrical poles to, to see they're possible to put it, but the electrical poles are not big enough or strong enough to put it. So that, that tell me that they have options. They can move it up to the north or to the south. I still think that maybe in that ideal situation back in the woods of, south of Montoya, that can be good, is knowing the sidewalk, when the people are walking every day. And it's, I mean, every time that we enter there, it's not appealing. And, and also it's misleading, we have, we don't have electrical, electricity in our street. We don't have any cables, everything is on the ground. We, we believe that, that even one time, we are thinking to build some kind of entrance, so look a little, but we even decided that that would be not appealing, that we leave the way that everything is there. And if we have a choice, we prefer to have electricity all over the ground, we don't want to see this post. And also, I don't believe in the technology that we have today, that we cannot move a post 200 feet. And I don't believe in the future is this kind of technology. Or we see the highway, any mile, we see a post in the highway. I don't imagine the highways, every hundred, every mile, we just see a post, because we had to use the video when we are driving. I don't believe that. And so, I think also, poor guy, the one that built a new house there, this is part of our neighborhood, he was part of our home association, the next guy that built a house there, and we had to protect them too. I think, I don't believe that that guy opened his master bedroom and see that kind of pole in front of his window. I don't think they will be the best either. And they cannot choose, I think the, the company or West Star, or whatever they call the, these guys, they're the one that put this in this trouble. If from the beginning, they made a little better homework, because they are thinking that, they, they think in advance, and they want to put it with the place that that was most appealing, and with the place that made less destruction. They're already thinking about us. I don't think they think about us when they put the tower here. And they are the one that put us in this trouble now, then we are really moving, when they can really think in advance, then that was not the best place to put it. Maybe the best place for them, because it's easy access, they don't have to cut any tree, they don't have to do anything, they can put their equipment. Maybe it's not, not many lines of the ground, so it's easy for them to put it there. But it's, it's terrible there. I've seen it, and I, and I believe with the lady, I'm sorry, her mate. But really, the sidewalk, a lot of people use that one there. We don't want to put more there, I, I hope that one day we can make it wider. And, but it's, it's very ugly there.
All right, thank you. Was there anybody else? Maybe if the applicant, if some things have come up that you can maybe want to respond to as far as questions. Keep it in mind that none of us are technically minded, and so it's easy for us to say, oh, come on, move this thing 200 foot. I'm sure there are reasons, and I, I agree too, the technology seems to change. It would seem odd to me that we couldn't go down. Poor Mike. You know, the Mike's, right here next to his pool there. You know, it's, it's, it's one of those things where, I'm sure you have legitimate explanations, yeah.
Well, just give him a chance.
Yeah.
Actually, before this went to planning commission, I was given, I was told that Mike had some concerns. One of the things I did was call him and talk to him about that location, and talk about the feasibility of being able to move the site. And where he located at, as some of his, there are currently some facilities down in that southern corner piece of it. And then I took that to the carrier and asked them, you know, could, is, how far can you move it, right? And that response was, I couldn't move it, they would deny me moving it to that location, because it doesn't meet their spectrum needs.
In that spot down there?
Yeah.
Man, them babies are sensitive.
They are. Part of this process is we go out in the field and we try to locate two to three possibilities when we do any of these. And so the three possibilities we picked were the two West Star poles, the one above, and then the one right next to it, and then this location as feasible within that area to try to find where to facilitate the equipment. I'd like to address a couple of, some of the concerns. One being safety and how that's applied to this location. One of the things about coming out of that location is any of our placement of poles have to be reviewed, because they go in the right-of-way. They have to be reviewed by the city engineer and their placement of that. And any site triangle issues, we would not be able to put the pole in the location. City engineer maybe could better talk to this location as far as the site triangle. But in general, I think it's a stop coming onto a major artery. So you have about 15 feet back from the corner back. I'm not the expert on the site triangles, but he is. But I, what, what I, what my perspective of this is, one of the things is we, we picked locations where we wouldn't run into site triangle issues, or we have put in different facilities like high on the pole to be able to deal with that. I don't think, that's not the case here with this location. I think that another concern was, you know, how wide is the sidewalk? Is it a standard sidewalk? All of those things are probably already vetted to the city. I can't speak for the city in and of itself, but you would think that the city has already determined a plan for the sidewalk and its components and its width as far as its utilization and its need. I can't speak to what that plan would be, or whether this would fit with that plan. But there is substantial space in between the sidewalk and the pole placement for it to be, to be put in place. The other component that you heard repeatedly was about the all-underground access, or underground utilities for the neighborhood. If you can see this picture, they keep referring to the entrance of it and the concern of that, and the component of that being above-ground facilities. In this picture, you can see the overhead facilities that are in place there already and is a component of access to that neighborhood. And I think that's one of the components of why the planning commission viewed this as a 6 to 2 vote in its initial findings.
So the facility at Country Club was denied by the planning commission. So what is Verizon's response to that?
We are, I was actually talking to Aaron, Mr. Martin, this afternoon about that. We've actually had, I made a call into one of the neighborhood members, and we're trying to get a meeting with the neighborhood to find a direction. It had different concerns, because there wasn't any aerial, and it was more, there wasn't the same types of structures in place. They've talked, they've, I talked to Mr. Dunn, who is the resident that I talked to about that. And some of their thoughts were to put it at some other locations, either the back of the park, where there is other wood structures like you would see here, or we also talked about at the entrance. But those are all, all those conversations. It's, it's always finding the majority who are going to agree to that. And sometimes we haven't found a location where the majority agree to it. There, there's always dissenting, like, some people say, put it in the, in the cemetery. Other people say, no, don't put it in the cemetery. Some people say, put it in this property line. Other people say, no, don't put it in this property line. So the feasibility of, we could be back here, back and forth many times, trying to find a location that is viewable or is, 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 doesn't have somebody come up and protest.
Question, with, with the limited range of this, where do the people live who are having complaints with the service now?
I have not, I don't, I don't know who has, I don't know that anybody has filed a complaint or not filed a complaint with the national provider about, about their service.
All the reason I ask, obviously, the folks who spoke here are having good service. Now, future aside, I mean, who knows, we may come up with something new in 10 years, makes all this obsolete, or makes all that we have now totally insufficient. But it goes back to the, you know, to the current need to expand the service. And if it's not that great, then I think, you know, the aesthetics can weigh a little more heavily than placement.
There's a spectrum map that we applied as part of our, that we got from the national carrier about what's, what they're finding.
It's obviously aimed at a certain.
It is.
Number of blocks.
In that application, if we can pull up, the application has that spectrum map to talk about what the need is for that area and how it impacts that.
Are we on here?
There you go.
If I may, well, that's being pulled up. I did want to point out that of those nine criteria I mentioned earlier that are to be considered in approving or denying the permit, the need for the facility is not on that list. As part of the application process, there is a requirement that the applicant provide with its application a study prepared by a radio frequency engineer demonstrating that this proposed facility is needed to provide adequate coverage and capacity. And that's a relatively low threshold. But the application that we're considering today included that, and that's in your packet today. That's a colored map showing the applicant's perceived need for coverage and capacity for this particular location. Ultimately, so long as that radio frequency study satisfies the threshold requirement in the application, the applicant has made its demonstration regarding the need, and we're on to consideration of the nine criteria in determining whether to approve or deny it.
And just to back up just a second from that, back to a question that Commissioner Hardy asked about the Country Club area. That too was supported by the, by that document as well, yet?
All of the applications that have been considered by the planning commission thus far have been accompanied by a radio frequency engineering report.
Okay.
And regarding that issue, and these color-coded maps are, the, the pink areas, the pink and blue areas would be those with poor reception? Because if so, those don't include the area of these houses.
I will let the applicant speak to how the, how the map should be interpreted in this context. It is somewhat technical.
So the, the pink is perceived as in-vehicle coverage fair, and then blue is perceived as outdoor coverage only poor. The yellow is in-building coverage residential, good.
So then, the area where these houses are located is in a yellow? If I'm reading this map correctly, yellow and green?
I think that, that you see the location, there is a, there is a pink. That's probably one of the areas that it's trying to address, is that pink within that field plot.
It's pink, you said? Gipson Hill 4.
Yep.
That's a little small area there.
Is that in the middle of the cemetery?
What's on the east side of Marymount? I can't tell how many.
And I can't see if there's other pink beneath the, the label or not, to be able to facilitate that.
Because it would seem as though something closer to Crawford would address that area pink. I'm, I'm thinking this area is further south on Marymount, and that it'll paint that.
It's where the labeling Gipson Hill 4 is, it's mis, I mean, the names change as we go through the process sometimes.
Right.
I have a quick question on, kind of go back to the location of this and how it impacts. The gentleman that spoke last mentioned, you know, something that I think is important, and that is, is that he clearly pointed out that the original application was to put this on the utility pole. That was further away, so if it, what exactly is the impact moving in that direction, less significant than moving in this direction, or why, why is it?
Can you say that again?
Well, the, the gentleman that spoke last indicated that, that the, that the proposed location for this particular unit was originally thought, you know, you wanted to try to utilize the pole, but West Star wouldn't let you use the pole. But if that location, which seemed to be right down there, why, why does that, that location not work for a single pole?
Yeah, if we could, could we bring back up the map, make sure I'm understanding the question?
Well, there's a, there's two utility poles, and didn't you say that out of the two utility poles, you got, you made an application to West Star to use one of those poles?
Pole A.
And then they told you you could because the neutral wire had to be the highest on the pole?
Why did we move back down this direction is the question.
Yes.
Right, instead of pursuing that location right across, right next to that in that wooded area.
Yeah. We perceive that as a worse location, because it was somebody, in somebody's backyard at the point. So we were trying to come up with the same analysis you are.
But you can't, but you can move it. I mean, you can, you can move it a little bit. You were able to move it that distance.
Let's go back to that, if we could, that, John, that aerial, I want to just get a feel for.
I mean, just for, just as a clarification, because that was a question that, that the gentleman had.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so Pole A was where, it was up here somewhere?
Not quite that far.
So just up in here?
Yeah.
Oh, it would be in that guy's kind of front yard, wouldn't it?
Well, it's in the right-of-way, so it's to the left of the property line.
It should be this pole here.
Pull higher, lower?
No, a little left. There you go.
Oh, right there? Is that guy here? Yeah. Yeah, because his house comes in this way, right?
Yeah.
But the, the other thought was if you moved it right there, then you're directly in front of the cross, the house across the street.
Oh, these guys, well, that's actually their backyard though, isn't it? Because then they've now made it face this way. then they'd now made it face this way. Even though they have a, we were talking about that, their house actually, so this is their backyard. So, his basic backyard, their backyard, boy, that sure seems a lot more pliable than that, but.
Not, not really specifically getting to the, to that particular location, but that there, there is some flexibility in what you can have.
Yes, yes. Okay. Yeah. That's, that's why we try to pick at general three points, two of those being co-locations to facilitate it, and then third being this new pole location.
Well, it seems, I love this point. I like, this is such a feeling of power right here. It just seems, this area here seems more reasonable.
Well, I, I think, I, I don't, I don't have any other questions for Mr. Myers. I don't know if anybody else does, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, again, appreciate your time.
Commissioner, throw out an option for you. You're, of course, are in the middle of a public hearing right now. Once you complete this part of it, you, if you, you can kind of count the folks in the audience to see if you'd want to table this to the end of the meeting and address the other issues and get them off, or if you'd rather stay with this. That's why I mentioned, you might want to see there, of course, as you know, people here that would like to see this completed, but you can decide. I just wanted to give you the option. But I would wait until your public hearings close before you decide if you would want to change the order.
Sure, sure. And that makes sense. I know every time Vortex comes before us, they're always at the end of the meeting. And so, they're here at five or six hours usually, going, "What?" Um, yeah, anybody else have any questions in or for him? Okay, if not. Was there anyone else from the public who, who had anything that, if not, we could just close it out then? Yeah, why don't we go ahead and close then the, the, the public part of the meeting, and we'll bring it back either for discussion, if we want to make an action, or if we want to table it. I don't know what the...
I have, I have a question for Dean, uh, prior to any of that. And that is, is that just scanning through the, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Crawford's thoughts about the Planning Commission kind of having taken a look at this and stuff. But as I read the minutes, it looked like there were several residents that had encouraged the commission to deny the application. And I just wanted to know what the, if the nature of the questions that we are discussing were kind of the same nature and, and as far as the location and being on that corner and not being, um...
I think the primary difference is that we were, we were somewhat discouraging to the Planning Commission in terms of talking about alternative locations, because we made it clear to them that alternatives weren't fair game at that meeting. And the other thing is that some of the residents who are here today have expressed no opposition to certain locations in the vicinity, and that, that wasn't put forward to the Planning Commission, that there were less objectionable locations. But part of that was that we focused the Planning Commission's attention on up or down vote on Idea Tech's proposal, and that, that there wasn't within their purview to, to look at or suggest alternatives, that they either had, if they wanted to deny it, and then discuss alternatives, that was okay. But it's not like they could approve it in a different location than what Idea Tech proposed. So, I think that threw cold water on any discussion about alternative locations, and there were no neighbors who attended who said that there were any other acceptable locations.
Well, Dean, we can't do that either. Is that correct? We can't suggest a new location. We have to either deny.
You can certainly suggest, make suggestions. So, I did text representatives at other locations. You might be viewed as less visually intrusive, but it's not something that you could choose as an alternative today.
Right.
They would have to live with whatever your decision was, then decide for themselves whether they wanted to submit an application for an alternate location.
Just to reiterate that, we are required to make findings and a specific conclusion with respect to this precise location. The availability of alternative locations and maybe lesser impact on each of those nine criterias from alternative sites is certainly something you can consider. But at the end of the day, the mere availability of an alternative location is not a sufficient basis.
Okay. Do we want to go ahead and, I mean, do, do we think we can knock this out quickly if we have anything in mind, or do you want to go ahead and table it and get rid of the rest of this business and?
I, I prefer to take care of the business at hand.
At hand?
And, uh...
Okay, that's fine with me.
And what, Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd just like to maybe ask the rest of the commissioners and, and you if, uh, if we could move into a closed session to, to help formulate with council some findings of fact. And so, if everybody's...
Do we need a motion a second on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Then I would so move.
Okay, and we, so we have a second. Okay, motion a second to move into closed session to discuss any finding of facts.
After a short recess?
I'm sorry, absolutely.
For all those over 60 years old, yes.
It happens to 45. Uh, that's why we just give about three or four minutes and plan on going in there at 6 o'clock. Any anticipation of how long we have, just for people who may want to stick around?
15 minutes?
Ten, maybe.
10 minutes?
10.
Okay. While, while we do that and then, uh...
We have to move on.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Investment Management Services for Individual, Business, Charitable, Retirement, and Trust Portfolios. TheTrustCo.com.
It's not quite ready to give it up yet. Okay, I'll call us back into session. Okay. Cal calls back in. Anybody, any further discussion on this issue? If not, entertain a motion or not.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the commission deny the applicant's request for a special permit to locate a wireless communication facility with new wooden support pole antenna and equipment cabinet in this location. This is found on the basis of the following findings. Number one, that it is incompatible with a budding property. Number two, that the proposed pole has an adverse virtual, visual impact on the nearby residential property. Number three, the proposed location is not currently, um, by any trees or existing buildings, and screening potential is somewhat limited. And finally, the scale of the facilities is disproportionate to other objects in the immediate vicinity.
Second?
Motion a second to deny petition number SP 14-3 filed by Idea Tech. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. I guess I should say that denial is five-zero. Is that correct? Correct terminology? Okay. Okay, thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Thanks.
You can stick around. It's going to be pretty fun.
Be midnight.
It'll be midnight. If, um, do I get, so do we need a formal motion to move items on their agenda, or is that, do I actually get a little fiat where I can do that too? Do I not have that much power?
If you should wish to table an item, that, that would take an action of, of the rest of them.
I just thought changing the order to go ahead, and I, I don't see any other, well, I guess we got the bicep here, but yeah.
Maybe I misunderstood your question. You're talking about before you opened up an item.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, Greg, the mayor has a discretion to simply move an agenda item order.
I think it doesn't matter.
Yes. Okay.
No objections.
Yeah, if, yeah, if there are no objections, maybe let's go ahead and bring Mr. Young up here in front of us for, I think that's item 8.1. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. If there's, nobody has a problem, let's do that and get you out of here before midnight, if that works. Sorry. I should just look out and see him and move him to the front, because he's, I think you've been on the last several times, so. Okay, that's the case. We'll move to 8-1 then.
Item 8.1, first reading ordinance number 14-10758, formalizing the property tax exemption for Salina Vortex Corporation's building addition located at 1725 Vortex Avenue.
Okay, I'm not back there yet. Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, back in March 2013, you were approached by the Salina Vortex Corporation, and you passed a resolution expressing your intent to and willingness to grant a property tax exemption for a proposed expansion of their facility at 1725 Vortex Avenue. The expansion involved construction of 64,000 square foot addition to their current facility. It's these areas here to the west and here on the south side that were the additions, that were the subject of that project. There's an 18-month completion period for construction projects under the state's constitutional property tax exemption policies. In September, it was realized that the 18-month time was fast approaching, and on September 8th, you granted a 60-day extension for project completion to November 15th, 2014. The project is now complete. All inspections have occurred. A final certificate of occupancy is ready to be issued for the 64,000 square foot addition. And Salina Vortex Corporation has filed their project completion report, which is attached. But if you look at page one there, at the time of application, they projected a capital investment of 3.6 million. Their actual investment was 4.4 million. And again, that's exclusive of any equipment, which is no longer subject to the local exemption process. The number of jobs they estimated during the project period would be seven new jobs created from their base employment. From their base employment of 159, they have a 2,00, or 207 jobs, which is a 48 percent, or 48 job growth. And so, as we showed on the table that's attached there, based on the city's tax exemption formula, with the number of jobs created and the amount of investment, they would be eligible for a 100% exemption years one through five, and 50% years six through 10. That exemption is applicable only to that 64,000 square foot addition space. It's not applicable to any other portion of the facility. And that would run for 10 years from today's action. So, the action today is there's been an ordinance prepared that would actually formalize that tax exemption. And if you're in agreement with that, you should approve ordinance 14-10758 on first reading, and that would execute the property tax exemption for this project.
Great. Any questions for staff on this?
The 10-year exemption on this at 100%, what, do, do we know what that, you know, we don't know what the mill levies will be in the years to come or whatever, but based on current numbers, do we know what that?
Well, that's 100% years one through five, and then 50% years six through 10. I will grab my projections. If I can fish that out, at the time that it was initially approved, we did an estimate through the cost-benefit analysis of how much taxes would be forego. And so, let me see if I can come up with that number. So, this estimated that taking into account all taxing jurisdictions, which in this case would be southeast Salina School District, City of Salina, Salina County Airport Authority, over the 10-year life, there would be $564,000 in property tax that would be abated over that 10-year period that would otherwise be paid.
Okay. Thank you. And then, as part of this thing, was there, there wasn't any additional infrastructures that, infrastructure, water, sewer, whatever? Was that on this one or was that a different?
There were no public improvements done that were supplemental. That was all done when the airport authority laid out this subdivision.
Okay. And we're going to keep the straight name the same?
Yeah, yeah.
The straight name, Salina Vortex Avenue?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Good.
You're a part of it.
Yeah, right. Okay, any, any other questions? Anyone from the public here to speak on this matter? Mr. Young? Sure?
Lee Young, 3324 South Simpson Road, Chairman, Vortex. I, I really don't have anything to add to the background that you have already, already have, but I am here to answer any questions, so.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Young?
Is it, uh, this was, Dean mentioned this was an extension. We had, we had done an extension, so everything's, construction's done and everything else?
Everything is complete. And we, we did in this expansion, in the southwest corner of the property there, make changes to ready another area for about 70,000 more square feet. So, we're trying to fill out the 16-acre campus that, that we have here. So, we do appreciate the commission did for us in allowing us to have the entrance onto Waterwell Road. That has been extremely beneficial. It's improved the traffic flow and made a lot of employees happy.
Great, great.
Super. Well, congratulations.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much. Any others from the public? Okay, if not, I bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move approve of ordinance number 14-10758 for property tax exemption for Salina Vortex Corporation.
Second?
Motion a second to approve ordinance number 14-10758. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five-zero.
Commissioners, before you hit your next item real quick, um, I want to throw this in because it affects the scheduling that you have. The city attorney and I were speaking about the study session earlier today. And if, if it's your, it's your pleasure, there is, the question came up, one was lawful delegation of authority in the criteria and how that relates to the call with regards to the public art. The question for you, and you don't, I'm not asking you to vote now, but if, if you could go into executive session after this, at the end of this meeting, if you should choose and discuss that if you would like. It's really a question of timing. If you, all I'm looking for is consensus, if you'd want to now or not. If you do, it helps us think about how long we're going to keep you, because we know that'll be at the tail end, and, and take care of you, you know, if you're here till 8 o'clock or whatever that might be. But, so that's why I'm asking if, if you feel like you would like to address that today or some other time.
I would like to. I think that's important.
You okay with that?
Okay, sounds fine.
So, you don't have to do anything. Then we'll bring it back at the end.
Basically going to go into executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss the, the, uh...
Call.
The call.
Yeah, the, the legal aspects associated with the delegation of authority regarding the, the community art and design policy. Jeff?
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks. Okay, so that'll take us back to consent agenda then? Okay. Is there any item on the consent agenda a commissioner would like removed?
Did you want her to read it first?
I'm sorry.
Did you want her to read it first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, read it. I'm, yeah.
Item 6.1, approve the...
Didn't you guys already read it?
Of November 17th, 2014. Item 6.2, authorize maintenance of water well numbers 13 and 14, project number 14-3053, by Lane Christiansen Company, Wichita, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $52,184. Item 6.3, resolution number 14-7154, authorizing the mayor to execute a second amendment to the architect agreement with Convergence Design LLC for the Salina Bicentennial Center renovations. Item 6.4, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement to terminate the engineering services agreement with Geiger Engineers PC for the Salina Bicentennial Center renovations.
Okay, now, any item on the consent agenda a commissioner would like amended or removed? If not, entertain a motion?
I would like to address a couple of issues.
Okay, as, as pertains to...
I would like, so that the staff and the audience will not feel like they've sat here in vain, I'd like to pull items numbers 6.1, 6.2, and 6.4.
6.1, 6.2, and 6.4.
I move we approve 6.3.
Second?
Motion a second to approve item 6.3. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five-zero. We'll bring it back.
That was you guys.
What's that? Oh.
6.3 was, was, well, part of you.
Part of you. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, on the, on the minutes, um, let me see. Um, okay, just a, a minor, minor thing here to begin with. Uh, it's moved by Commissioner Davis, that paragraph, it says "to certain existing public building," and it should probably be buildings. Have an S on the end of it?
Page, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry, page five. And in terms of the legalese on this stuff, uh, at the end of that sentence, it says "therefore," should that be a thereof instead? We're still on page five, that first paragraph.
I'll go back and look, but I think that was exactly how it was worded on the blue sheet.
I, I, it was, but I'm wondering if that's the correct word. That's all.
That would probably...
Therefore... "Therefore" doesn't sound? Somehow didn't sound right to me. Where it says 14-0341, on page 5 of the minutes, moved by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Blanchard, the last word in that paragraph.
Oh, okay. Just moved by Commissioner. I got you right there.
I'm sorry. Do we know which word?
"Therefore" was used, but I was just wondering if? I don't normally see "therefore", unless you're saying there? Something follows. "Therefore, we will do this", instead of "thereof", maybe.
I understand in this case, though, I would think that if that was the term often used, then that should reflect that term.
Right. It did reflect that, but I was just wondering if it was the right word to begin with.
Oh, I suppose. I don't disagree that "thereof" is probably the more correct term. But the minutes are intended to reflect what was actually said, so.
Okay. All right.
So, should have been a question on the blue sheet? Not so much? So, minutes are correct. Blue sheet may be wrong.
The, and the last thing? This is related to the item dealing with resolution 14-7152. That same item. And this came up somewhat in our study session where Jason was referring to the minutes. And the minutes were? Did not really? It was unclear about what responses were to questions. And this has happened to us. And I think Commissioner Blanchard mentioned that not too long ago. And this particular item, I was going to use as an example. If I was just reading this? I was reading this just casually, first time through. I couldn't remember what it was we were talking about. And it was the bicentennial. And, but the word "bicentennial center" is not even mentioned in this particular item. And I was thinking, you know, it's just in terms of people wanting to go back and, well, what did they talk about? And it was a fairly substantial item that we dealt with when we were talking about the bicentennial center. But there's not much in the way of minutes to describe what happened. And I just have a question about that kind of, you know, response in general as well? To know what? Well, we do it? We cover the questions pretty well, but we don't cover the responses as well. That was my question.
Is that generally? Kind of as a point of reference?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is that typically? Is that the way it's typically done? I know with the planning commission, there are more detailed records, but there's certain reasons why that is the case and so on and so forth.
Yeah. The, excuse me, the planning commission minutes, as you know, because of the types of actions that they have and statutory requirements, the record is very? It's a? From a legal perspective, it's very important. So, that's why you have the, I call them the expanded version of minutes. With the city commission, we try to keep it as limited as possible to primarily address the actions. However, well, I need to go back on the question that Commissioner Hardy raised and look at the video because I don't mean this in a bad way, but sometimes we switch gears pretty fast. And it's very possible there were questions asked, but there weren't responses because we switched over to another gear. I just don't know in that case. But I would expect if the minutes do reflect a question and there is an answer, the minutes should reflect an answer. And that's, yeah, that's expected. That's? But I just don't know in that case if there really was an answer. And I would need to go back and look at the?
We sort of all remembered it a little bit differently.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that maybe what? Because I've looked at this before and had comments. And it's like, oh, because trying to jog my memory from reading the minutes. And it's nice to have the video there to be able to access so easily. But just in reading the minutes, you know, a lot of times it'll say? I'll just pull this. Commissioner Blanchard asked if Centennial Road had been a discussion in the Bicycle Master Plan. Dean Andrew, Director of Planning, and Mr. Gage responded. But it didn't?
Didn't have the response.
Yeah, like in the affirmative or?
Yeah. I would say that's a stylistic thing. And if, for the minutes, if there's a question you would like to see the response documented, we certainly can do that. Absolutely. So, if that's a? If that's a preference, there's no question we can do that.
And what is? And I guess, and I don't know? I don't want to step on your question here. But to what extent do we? Have we done that in the past? Or, I mean, have we always just done the? Done it this way that? I've responded, but no really affirmative or?
I would have to go back and look, but I'm presuming the style? We haven't talked about style changes, so I'm assuming the style has been pretty consistent for a long time. But I, you know, to my knowledge, yeah.
But it would have been useful to you today to have those responses.
Yeah. Yeah, I did run into a couple dead ends, didn't I? I think it would be useful. And I think, I mean, again, we try to abbreviate, but I think we can also, and paraphrase to keep them small. But we can still do that with the response as long as we feel that we've characterized the response. So, if that's a preference in the style of the minutes that if there is a question and the question's referenced in the minutes that you would like to see the answer paraphrased in there as well, we can certainly do that.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. Looking to make sure everybody's nodding, but that's pretty easy, I think. It's a very good suggestion.
Okay. So, with all that good stuff in mind, you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Minutes be? Minutes for November 17th?
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the minutes? Oh, and I'm sorry.
Let me ask it. Was there? Was there a change or did you have a?
The grammatical changes?
There was, yeah.
Made by Commissioner Hardy.
Okay. Yeah, second.
Okay. Motion, second, to approve the minutes with the grammatical change on?
Well, and actually, I'm sorry. One other change?
Buildings, yeah.
Did you want? That paragraph?
Already approved, 6:30.
If? Well, ideally, but that's? I don't know what the best way would?
Commissioners, I went back and looked at the information from the last meeting. And I believe that was pulled from the title of the resolution. And the resolution did have "thereof". So, if that's where it came from, I'm not sure. I didn't find it in the blue sheet. But if it's in the resolution, it was "thereof". So, yeah, I think?
With those changes, then? Okay. All in favor then of approving the minutes with those changes? Aye. All opposed? Okay, that carries 5-0. Takes us to 6:2. Maybe it's just easier if you just sort of ask if there's? I mean, rather than go through the whole?
My question? You don't need to go through this whole thing. The question I had was, is there a better way to do this? Or is this the cheapest way to do this?
Well, there might be cheaper ways. And we've tried a few of them in the past. And we just haven't been that successful. And about every? Between five and 10 years, we'll clean each well. And we start with a rigorous acid wash. And then, we move into kind of a mechanical-type cleaning, then chlorination. And what we're really trying to resolve is, we've developed, for lack of better terms, kind of a slime layer bacteria that's grown on the screen and then inside of the gravel pack.
You ask whatever works.
So, we're trying to remove all of that material, which is kind of a slick, slimy mess. And then, we've actually sent the slick, slimy mess off and had it analyzed to determine what is the best process to clean it? Are we using the right chemicals? And going through the right process of vigorously cleaning it? And to the best of our knowledge, what we came up here seems to be the most effective, that we can get those years out of it. And typically, I would like to clean a well when we start seeing the capacity drop much more than 25%. It's probably no? Cost of a well is 250,000 to 300,000,000. So, trying to expend the life of it or not? If this plugs up and we pull the well down, what ends up is we result in damaging the pump, which is $80,000 to replace? So, it seems like a lot of money to clean it. And we've asked ourselves the same question and have went that far into evaluating, is there something better? And to date, we haven't found it. But we?
Do you know? So, other cities might be using the same process?
Oh, they do. This is a common practice that Lane provides. And, you know, Gary's probably from his community. He's seen it. And we seem to see more issues in the north side of our wellfield than we do the south side. And of course, that could be because of the contamination and the different issues we have up there. But we haven't been able to document that. But, and wells 13 and 14 are near the north end of our wellfield. And we just try to check the capacity and the drawdown on a regular basis just to avoid damaging an $80,000 pump. We've learned the hard way a couple of times. We're trying to avoid that.
Commissioner Hardy, if they don't do that, it's going to smell real bad.
I'm not saying don't.
I try to avoid talking about taste and odor issues. But you're right, Ken.
Well, when you said we sent it off, I was afraid you were going to say we sent it off to see what it was. Yeah, that's what I was concerned hearing that answer.
Well, we did send it off to see what it was and how best we could kill it, so. Does that answer your question?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. If not, then I entertain a motion on item 6:2.
I move that we authorize the maintenance of water wells number 13 and 14, project number 14-3053, by Lane Christensen Company, Wichita, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $52,184.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve project number 14-3053. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Takes us on to 6:4. If you just have a specific question?
My only question is, how much money was spent with Geiger Engineers?
On the second contract?
On this contract that we're terminating.
Roughly 67,000?
67,000. So, at the end of the 67,000, that was the only thing they did was determine that? We determined that what they were proposing was not going to work.
Well, the first contract? Or the first study that they did was to basically assess the roof. The second piece was actually designing what the structures would be that we would go in there with for the roof rigging and steel. When we took their second design, or the second one that we're talking about here, out to market, if you will, the pricing was 1.8, 1.9 million. That just wasn't in the cards. So, hence, we looked at different routes to go in there and try to save that money. Now, we're down roughly about 800,000 under that.
So, part two was $67,000.
Correct. Well, the contract was for more than that, but that's what we had roughly paid because they completed roughly four and a half of the five tasks within the contract.
So? Too bad.
Yeah, was there a budget lined out prior to them doing the engineering to say, this is what? This is what the budget to construct the rigging?
There was discussions about it. And the initial number we were talking with was closer to that 750 to 850 range with the initial budget that we had.
Right.
But when they got in there and found some of the things, I guess, that they had and with their design, the long and short of it was the amount of welding. That's what drove the price of their new design up. It was basically a bunch of plates that were welded on all the existing structure. And the McCallan Gordon had calculated over 5,800 hours of welding would be required just in that piece, plus the purchase of the actual steel itself.
Yeah, we don't have enough welders for that, so.
More money.
It would have been a lot more.
Well, but my question kind of goes more towards, was the engineer not aware that there was a? That there was a budget on this thing? And at what point would they determine that it's like, well, we'll go ahead and? I mean, at some point, you have to say, boy, preliminarily? You know, conceptually, this thing's going to be a couple million dollars. Let's don't engineer anything. Let's tell them that this thing's going to be 2 million.
Yeah. There were discussions too. Again, I can't directly answer the question. We had a placeholder in there of the 750 to 850 range. But there were discussions directly with them too, saying, hey, what we're trying to bid out here, we're not even close. What can we go back in? And how can we tweak what you've done and come up with something more realistic? They just weren't able to come up with anything. And hence, that's when we looked to go a different direction.
Yeah. And Commissioners, if my recollection's correct, we, as Deon mentioned, we were at 750 to 8 early on with limited information. And then, we got that back and we're starting to take a look at it. But that's after we had the results back. The number we thought was going to be around maybe 1.2?
1.2, 1.3.
Somewhere in there. And we still felt like, no, that's pretty high, but it's still realistic for a complete work in, you know, in all the rigging of the steel that holds the roof up. But it's when we got into the, really getting bid, subcontractors bidding and soliciting real bid information regarding the actual work, which is what Deon's referring to, that the number jumped up. The real number, I think it is, jumped up to over 2 million dollars. And so, it was pretty far? I mean, it was so far into the process, that's when we realized there's just no way that's going to work. And we had to do something else. But, you know, to answer the question, should the structural engineer have realized early on that the potential cost of this would be 2 million bucks? I can't answer that. I don't know. I do know there are a lot of small pieces to this. It's a very good question. I don't know. But we really felt like the only real option early on was to reinforce the whole rigging structure. And it was really a creative solution that came about through Convergence Design folks working with structural engineers that said, hold on, there is a standalone option we can consider standalone option we can consider, and we think we can bring the cost back down.
It's worth noting too, we had numerous discussions with Geiger about trying to look at, and I said this before, but trying to look at different solutions, different options, different ways that we could get the number back down to closer, because we were, we had some frustration with them as well, when we were looking in that, if you will, 800 to a million dollar range, and then, you know, it just kept creeping, and creeping, and creeping, and creeping, so hence where we're at today. Any other questions for staff?
When were these guys hired, was, did, did we, did we hire them, I mean, the current commission, or was that before us?
I believe it was the current commission, with the exception of Mr. Davis. Like your first week on the job.
March 11th, 2013.
Oh, it was those guys.
Hey, it's on you guys.
Oh, it was March, oh, you're right, yeah.
The first work was April 27th.
No, I, I recall them, I recall that time though, and that, and that whole thing, and hadn't they, were they, were they recommended by Global Spectrum, or who was it that had recommended?
I think so, they were, they're pretty well-known with the work that they do, and that we, I mean, they came very, very well-recommended, so we had no questions about the competency of knowing that, if we said, hey, analyze the gridding, grid, or the grid work, tell us if it's sufficient or deficient, and if it's deficient, recommend what we need to do, we were very confident, and I, I mean, we could do exactly what they asked us to do and spend the money, and we'll have a, the whole roof will be very strong, that really wasn't the issue.
No.
Right, but I mean, it's not a matter of, this was the second contract, so it wasn't like, oh, we just broke open a wall, and we saw new stuff that we hadn't figured on before, and, I mean, they, they, they knew what they were dealing with, well, I'm a little disappointed that they could get $67,000 into an engineering deal, the original contract was for what, 9, 90 something?
73, I believe.
So, they left $6,000 on the table. Yeah, I'm, I'm real disappointed that they, that they basically finished the whole thing, and then it's like, oh, this thing's $2 million, that's only 2 and whatever percented, 200 and some percent above the, yeah, I'll tell you, let's do not recommend those to other organizations.
Blue sheet says they're interested in, indicated interest in partnering on future projects.
Good luck.
We don't have any lined out right now, but...
No comment. That's, that's disappointing, I mean, to put it...
Sure.
Kind of in the PG version, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion on that? Anyone from the public?
No, I, I think it's good that we're terminating this agreement, it's...
Yeah, for sure, if we don't feel serious.
Okay, I entertain a motion then.
Let someone make a motion, I just have a comment.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign an agreement to terminate the, the engineering services agreement with Geiger Engineers PC for the Salina Bicentennial Center renovations.
Second.
Motion to second to terminate the engineering service agreement with Geiger Engineering, any comments, or...
Yeah, I just had a question for counsel, is there any, I mean, anything in here that, that we can address that we might be, in, in the agreement that, that addresses kind of their billing, and to what point their billing, and, and we know where we are, and, and the whole process, I mean, do we have any remedies, or is it just terminate it and save $7,000?
Sure answer would be the latter, I believe.
Yeah, I figured.
Now, we're exercising the ability under the term of the contract to terminate it immediately, and those that were more directly involved in that analysis would probably want to speak, I know that those are based on actual bills, on actual bills, you pay.
There it is, it's green.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's good.
I'm sorry. The, as I understand, those were based, that analysis was based on actually, actual paid bills, and for work performed, the, the exact timing, am I correct, that generally, once we recognize that there was an alternative that should be seriously considered, that their work ended on the, on the more expensive approach, or...
Basically, what was left was the construction services portion, where they would be onsite for the construction, overseeing, looking at, inspecting, et cetera, the design was complete, we have all the submittals, all the biddable documents, all of that stuff is, is in hand, so the deliverables, four, four and a half of the five are met. Okay.
Yeah, so we're not, they're not going to come after us for the seven, because they're not, we're not using their design basically, is the, okay.
And this is, you are exercising one of the express remedies under the agreement in the termination.
Right.
Okay, motion to second, any further discussion besides that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, that moves us on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 14-10757, providing for the vacation of a 10-foot east-west alley abutting Lot 51 on Front Street and Lot 103 on Second Street in the original town of Salina, Saline County, Kansas.
Ordinance number 14-10757 was passed on first reading November 17th, 2014, since that time, no comments have been received, anyone from the public here care to comment on this? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 14-105, 10757.
Second.
Motion to second to approve on second reading ordinance number 14-10757, with the clerk, please call the roll, please.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Mayor Householder?
Aye.
That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, resolution number 14-7155, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Myers Hauser and Company, PA-certified public accountants for an audit, city records for the year ending December 31st, 2014.
Mr. Franz on this one?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you, it is time to consider the proposal from Myers Hauser for the audit for the year ending December 31st, 2014, this is a firm that we've had a relationship for a number of years, they do a good job, the staff's professional, efficient, they're usually in and out within, they spend a week onsite, normally in the springtime, as well as, well, I guess, late winter, they'll come in for a period of time, and then come back later, the fee proposed this year is $39,155, and that's approximately 3% higher than it was last year, they have, the fee has been relatively stable in the upper half of the $30,000 range for the last five or six years, I believe, so it has been relatively, relatively flat, I would say that the 3% raise this year is a little bit more than it has been in, in the last several years, but nonetheless, we feel it's an appropriate decision to proceed with this, and, and would recommend that as a course of action.
Great, thanks, any question for staff? Okay, thank you, Ron, bring back the, oh, anyone from the public on this issue? Yeah, that's right, for those of you at home, there's no one in the audience, it's like, okay, I bring back commission for possible action.
I move we approve resolution number 14-7155, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Mike Hauser and Company, PA-certified public accountants for an audit of city records for the year ending December 31st, 2014.
Second.
Motion to second to adopt resolution number 14-7155, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. I have a 7-3 in front of me, is that been pulled? That was moved? Wow!
Yeah, we need one more week to finalize the contract.
Okay, okay, sorry about that, didn't know that, okay, so that brings us back, and now, if we're going to go back in and discuss this, that's just a standard executive session, do we have wording for that, or is it...
Be legal?
I move to recess and, I do this?
Well, real quick, just want to check and see if any of you have any other business, because you probably want to do it now if you do, versus when you get done, but if you don't, then yeah, go right into executive session.
Okay, yeah, is there any other business at all, anyone? Okay, appreciate you giving us that heads up, you never know.
I move to recess into executive session for...
However long you think you'll need.
20 minutes?
I might explain, just briefly, too, this is one of those that, the discussion seemed to me to raise a legal issue that possibly warranted some clarification, and just so everyone knows, we will have to be very careful to be sure to stick to our knitting on the strictly legal aspect.
Aspects of it, okay.
That there are certainly policy questions related to this topic, that, that if there are to be further discussions, need to occur.
Out here?
Out here.
Okay.
Not necessarily this evening, but...
Right, yeah.
Just wanted to assure anybody that...
Preferably not this evening.
That might be concerned that, that the conversation will be limited to the legal aspects.
So, even less time, you think?
That's what I wanted to make sure was clear.
10, maybe 10 minutes, you're really just informing us, let's go 50 to be safe.
Informing you and responding to any questions on the legal aspect.
I haven't heard the expression "stick to the knitting," that's pretty good, I like that, kind of old expression.
So, how about 15 minutes? That sound good? Okay.
I move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvenance of...
15.
15.
Motion to second to move into executive session for 15 minutes, do we anticipate any action after this?
No, we do not.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in executive session.
And from the sustaining members of this NPR station. Radio Kansas is funded by Disability Supports of the Great Plains, providing residential services, day supports, case management, and supportive home care for individuals with developmental and physical disabilities, programs in McPherson and Hutchinson, 620-241-8411. Clear skies are in the forecast overnight.